Good morning.
It's me.
Yeah, I think we might be muting. Okay. We are all still getting used to hybrid mode and one of these days we will be experts at muting microphones, but it takes a lot of practice. I am Zan Ogerod, Board Chair, and I would like to acknowledge that we're on the indigenous land of the Kalapuea Indians, the Ampineafu Band, and the Chemaco or Muddy Creek Band. Following the Treaty of 1855, both were moved to reservations further west of Corvallis. Today, the descendants of these people are living as part of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron community and the Confederated Tribes of the Solets. With that, I will pass on the baton of introductions to Commissioner Wise.
Hello, good morning. Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Good morning. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Vance Croney, County Council.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Alyssa Rass, Public Information Officer.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
Hallie Lucy, Health Department Communications Coordinator.
I see that we have Under Sheriff Greg Riddler with us this morning as well and Erica Milo, Recorder. You needed juice? Okay. And Theresa Farley is also with us from the Board's office. Are there any announcements? Okay, hearing done. Comments from the public? No one with us. We will now review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, we will consider that approved and move on into the work session. The first item of business is our update from the Department Operations Center, beginning with Suzanne Hoffman.
Raymond, I am going to turn this over to our Public Health Administrator, April Holland.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, all. Thanks. I have a lot to share with you today, so I'll jump right in. First, I'll cover what we're up to at the Department Operations Center, which of course is activated for COVID vaccination. Then I'd like to talk about where we are in terms of vaccination and really upcoming events. Finally, I'd like to give an overview of our recent case counts and share some important information about the Delta variant, which has been front and center in the news. So for the Department Operations Center, the DOC is moving as we speak. Our lease at the LaSalle Stewart Center at OSU comes to an end on July 31st, and since we have eight vaccine clinics to support next week, the last week of July, we're moving our operation to the Sunset Building on Research Way. This move is once a few steps on our way to bring COVID vaccination efforts into public health as part of our COVID recovery and response. We've determined that we have sufficient work to retain the temporary and limited duration staff at least through the FEMA-supported response period, which ends September 30th. We'll make another determination of our ongoing needs, and we may be able to keep a limited duration, sorry, a limited number of staff beyond that date. The DOC is staying busy vaccinating, though in much smaller numbers than we saw in the spring, of course. Our focus has been on narrowing gaps in vaccination rates, and we've made progress in that regard. We've seen increases in vaccination among underserved groups. I had a look at the period from May to July, and the vaccination of Black and African American as well as Pacific Islander groups increased 65% in that period. We saw increases of about 50% among Hispanic, Latino, and Asian residents. These increases outpace those of white residents for whom vaccination increased 30%. And progress continues to be made in our rural areas. In the same period, Monroe went from 46% to 60% vaccinated with at least one dose, and Alsea and Blodgett made impressive gains as well, with a 29% increase in the percentage of Alsea vaccinated and a 41% increase in the Blodgett rate, which went from 17% to 24%. So I'll move along to vaccination and upcoming events. Our overall rate for the county, we have a vaccination rate of 62% now of all residents with all needed doses. One may call this the fully vaccinated rate, but it does include a small number who are waiting that 14 days since the last shot. If we look at Benton residents who have had at least one dose of vaccine, our percentage vaccinated is 65%, so that gap is really closing there as more people get fully vaccinated. The Governor's Office and OHA have new dashboards reflecting goals of getting to 80% vaccination rates by August for those 18 and over. While I absolutely agree that we must focus on raising rates of the underserved, I believe that looking at the overall rate of vaccination, which includes children under 12 who are not yet eligible for vaccination, gives us the clearest picture of the county's protection and the county's risk. So it can be confusing to look at different numbers, so I really just want you to know our overall picture is what really gives us the clearest one. I mentioned that we have some busy days ahead next week. On Sunday, we have the second round of the Boys and Girls Club of Corvallis. During our first event, more than 40% of the 65 vaccinated identified as Hispanic or Latino. We're looking forward to another successful clinic at Boys and Girls Club. And then on Tuesday through Saturday next week, we have seven additional clinics to support in rural areas. The OHA FEMA Mobile Vaccination Unit will be back in Monroe for events on all days Tuesday through Saturday, and will be in Flumet on Tuesday and Alsea on Wednesday. When this crew came through earlier in the month, we vaccinated 131 individuals and also offered food boxes and grocery gift cards. We're looking forward to adding more events to our calendar as the summer unfolds, including at sports physicals and various back-to-school clinics. We did learn last week that we aren't likely to see vaccinations for youth under 12 until mid-winter. In my mind, that may mean February or so, so it looks like kids will have about a half a year of school before those under 12 can be eligible for vaccination. While this is discouraging, we know that there are ways that we can continue to protect our kids. So I'll move on to the case discussion and some information around Delta variant. So since COVID began, it has been, it has not been uncommon to see increases in cases following a holiday as more people gather together. However, this latest increase that we're seeing also aligns with an increase in cases in many, many places that appears to be related to the spread of Delta in our area. So just to give you a few numbers, in the last couple of weeks, I'll go back to the 13th of June, we had 25 cases that week. The next several weeks were 18, 8, and then the week of 4th of July, 28, and then this last week, 34. So we are seeing increases in those numbers. And our 14-day case rates are also on the rise, so we're looking at a rolling 14-days rate per 100,000. Back a few weeks ago, we were at 27 cases per 100,000, and then the week of 4th of July, that raised to 38 per 100,000, and then this last week, it's up to 65 per 100,000. So in the old framework, we'd be looking, we'd be back in the moderate frame there. So I'm going to shift my talking points to really focusing on the Delta variant because we have been getting so much information about it, and I'm eager to share so that we're all informed. So a lot of us want to know, you know, what the Delta picture looks like in Oregon and in county, and how prevalent is it here and beyond. So nationally, the CDC reported that the variant constituted 10% of cases in mid-June across the U.S., and now accounts for about 60% of cases across the U.S. So mid-June to mid-July, that's not a lot of time, so there's a lot of transmission happening really rapidly. Delta appears to be very transmissible. So if you recall, the Alpha variant, which was B117, also sometimes called the UK variant, that one was 60% more transmissible than the original strain of the virus. Delta is estimated to be 60% more infectious than Alpha. And so the estimates of the reproduction number, or the RNOT, if you remember your Epi from when COVID began, that's the number of people that an infected person could be expected to transmit to. For Delta, it could be anywhere between four and nine people. So it could be more contagious even than smallpox in a vulnerable community, so this is a very infectious variant. So back to prevalence, on July 3rd, the OHA variant dashboard indicated detection of 14 genotyped samples across the state positive for Delta, so that was July 3rd, and as of July 11th, that number was 43. Of course, sequencing gives us an idea of what's circulating in the community, but relatively few specimens are genotyped. We can say that Delta has arrived in Oregon, and we anticipate that it will continue to displace other variants and become the dominant strain very soon, as has been the pattern across the U.S. and beyond. It's also useful to view the data regionally. The CDC has a useful page of variant proportions by region that can be viewed with and without predictive modeling. Now, the up-to-date data isn't very useful, but the now cast estimates show that Delta is responsible for about 43% of cases in Region 10, which is the Pacific Northwest. This tracks with our actual reporting, which shows that 45% of genotyped cases are currently Delta variant in Oregon. So I also checked in with our friends at OSU Trace. Their sequencing results had not indicated local detection of Delta as of their last report dated June 28th, which reflected sequencing from mid-June. At that time, Delta had been detected in five out of six recent samples from Ontario, Oregon, as well as in samples from Hermiston and Cottage Grove, but at that time, we hadn't had any Benton County detections. I learned yesterday that three cases of Delta variant in Benton County were reported by Oregon State Public Health Lab. It appears that all three are associated with an outbreak at a congregate setting facility, and two of the three appear to be breakthrough cases. All three are doing well. Our team is following the outbreak closely and facilitating additional testing. Of course, it's not surprising that Delta variant was detected here, and the detection of three cases is almost certainly an undercount of what's truly circulating. So we have a growing share of Delta in terms of the proportion of cases sequenced, and as I said earlier, our overall number of sequence specimens remain low. So Delta's here, and it's going to, it's going to be here for a while. The next question that comes up is, how can we protect against Delta? And the question comes up of whether vaccines are effective against the Delta variant. The answer to that is yes. All three vaccines are effective against Delta, particularly against hospitalization and death. A recent UK study found that full vaccination with Pfizer is 96% protective against hospitalization. The J&amp;J vaccine had a recent study that shows that it produces strong antibody responses and cellular responses against Delta, still present eight months after administration. Analysis from the UK shows 78% to 80% protection against symptomatic infection with Pfizer. In summary, vaccines are safe, and they provide protection against the Delta variant, most importantly, against hospitalization and death. We expect to see some cases in fully vaccinated people, but they are at much lower risk of developing severe illness or dying. Another way to put it, unvaccinated people are most vulnerable, partially vaccinated people are slightly less vulnerable but not robustly protected, and fully vaccinated people are very protected. I mentioned before that our overall rate of vaccination of full protection is about 62% in the county. You know, that is an incredible amount of progress in a short amount of time, but that does not community immunity make. So we really should consider ways to protect our communities. I'm a proponent of further reducing risk, particularly for people with vulnerable family members. In addition to being fully vaccinated, I recommend that Benton County residents add interventions such as masking when spending time indoors with people outside of one's household by distancing, limiting crowds, being outdoors or in areas with good ventilation, hand washing, et cetera, as all of these will further reduce risk. Yesterday, the American, I just want to share a couple of things happening around the country. Yesterday, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended universal masking for kids in schools. And then we're seeing some areas, you know, starting to recommend or require indoor masking. At this time, our case rates remain low, though we have seen an increase in activity. So I think that enhancing this messaging to recommend masking while indoors as Delta makes its way through our community and as we get more people vaccinated, including young people, is the way to go in terms of reducing risk. I have some more information to share that talks about, you know, how Delta transmits. Basically, it looks like people who are infected with Delta test positive more quickly following exposure, so they have a short incubation period and a lot of really rapid viral growth, and their viral loads are 1,000 times higher with Delta when first detected. So that means they're shedding a ton of virus, and the likelihood that a close contact will be exposed to an infectious dose is higher. So with more virus around, it'll be easier to spread. So vulnerability to Delta among partially vaccinated people makes sense because partially vaccinated people have low levels of neutralizing antibodies or the immune response, and Delta can overcome this defense by sheer numbers. So they just, you know, throwing a ton of it at a person will overcome the small amount of defense that they have. People who are fully vaccinated have higher titers of neutralizing antibodies, and they have cellular memory of the virus, so it's going to be harder for Delta to overcome this by strength and numbers. But it will happen to some people, so some people will get symptomatic infection who are fully vaccinated. Most people will not. What we don't know is whether vaccinated individuals will still shed enough to transmit Delta efficiently. Hence, you know, my thought that the message to mask indoors, you know, be continued to be amplified. I think that's all I have. I'm sorry for taking 20 minutes of the meeting today, but I feel like this is an important time to get this information to you all.
Thank you, April. I attended a small outdoor gathering this weekend, and this was a major topic of conversation, and people were quite concerned, and there was a lot of discussion about continuing to mask in public settings such as stores and among people that were not known, not familiar. So I think that it's very timely, and I hope that we will indeed get the message out broadly about the need to continue to be vigilant.
A couple of questions. April, you mentioned Benton County, 62% of all residents are fully vaccinated. Does that mean infants on up, or what, is there any qualification to all residents?
Hi, Commissioner Malone. Thanks for the question. Yes, that includes all residents, so our total denominator of 94,655 people as the denominator and all of the number vaccinated as the numerator. That gives us the best estimate of our protection and our risk.
On our clinics, are there any common themes for people showing up now versus a month ago or two months ago when mass vaccination clinics were not full? I guess the question is, what kind of messages seem to be effective in motivating people to show up at clinics?
Sure, that's a great question, Commissioner. Yeah, we have, we have a lot of pieces in motion to bring people to the vaccination table and to have conversations with them once they get there and before they get there. So we have, for instance, volunteers and partners who are going out and canvassing neighborhoods where we know that vaccination rates are low. So having conversations right at the doorstep with people. We have just canvassing by putting flyers out. We have basically an invitation for a conversation with anyone who wants to have one. You know, we had a couple people at the beginning of July who came through the rural clinics, and, you know, we just sat down and had a talk with them. The majority of them went ahead and got vaccinated. We had a couple people who said, "I'm going to have to think about this a little more." And we said, "That's great." And, you know, every chance we have to have a conversation, we hope brings people closer to actually being fully vaccinated. We have to work a lot harder for every vaccination right now. Another big piece of consideration is the barriers that people may have faced and may still face to get vaccinated. So we try to currently offset the inconvenience of coming out to the clinic by offering incentives for people to become vaccinated. And so if the time that it takes out of their day, you know, is a certain amount of time, and, you know, they're not able to cook dinner, and they have to put gas in their car, we're providing gift cards to offset that, and at some of the clinics, a box of non-perishable foods. We've decided to increase our incentives to include second doses because of the importance of getting people fully vaccinated with the Delta variant circulating, and so we're upping our incentives to $100 gift cards for both first and second doses for every person coming through a clinic now.
Okay, thank you. Just a little follow-up. I guess it's been almost a month, but do you have any sense for the million-dollar lottery prize? How motivating that was to people?
Well, I know it was motivating for us. We were very, very excited that the winner was, is a student here at Oregon State University. We heard some buzz from volunteers and others about the excitement. I'm not sure if the state is considering additional scholarships or big incentives or drawings, but at this time, we want to keep everything level and provide equal incentives for each person coming through.
All right. Well, thank you for the update.
Any questions, Nancy? April, I was just looking at our dashboard on the county website, and I see that the 30- to 49-year-old demographic was the one that had the biggest jump in cases recently, which is a little disappointing to see. And also note that the vaccination rate is kind of lagging in that age group as well. So we definitely have work to do, and it's hard to know how to reach people.
We will continue to use every resource at our disposal, you know, within reason. We were aware of the 30- to 49-year-olds, as well as the older teenage group as well, has a pretty low vaccination rate. So we're thinking creatively and really working to reach both of those, and we're going to keep at it.
Yep, all we can do.
Just a follow-up on the masking. I think I've said it before, we've got a couple months and now less than that before school starts up and people spend more time indoors because of the change in the weather. But I think it seems like we ought to be working on the message of masking ain't over, that, you know, we're in pretty good shape right now, not as good as we were a month ago. And I hope the governor and her folks are working on this because it seemed like it took about a day and a half to go from people being pretty good about masking and then, oh, all better, all gone. And the messaging about, well, if you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to mask, but if you are, and that message got trampled. And so just figuring out how to reengage that conversation. And we have a little bit of time to get the word out. I'd be curious what the governor's plan is, because that's helpful for us to have the state take the lead, or maybe even the federal government. And just so we don't backslide too far.
Sure, I hear you, Commissioner. I think that, you know, while the state and the feds may provide some requirements and have provided some guidance, the indication that I have are that this will be up to the locals to provide recommendations. The ready, safe school, I just forgot the acronym, I'm sorry. The guidance from the state in regards to education, just, this is simplifying it, but largely replaces requirements with recommendations. So our schools reopening team, led by our amazing manager, Sarah Hartstein, has reconvened and is really focused in on those messages to our school districts.
Well, let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you. When you say, April, that you're moving back to Sunset Building, will you be using the conference room there?
We will not, not on a regular basis. We have found some empty spaces and interim spots, and so everyone has a place to be on the second floor at Sunset.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else for April? Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated, very timely update. Okay, we will then move on to talk about the extension of the sunset date for the Benton County Vehicle Camping at Religious Institutions Code, which is Chapter 40 of Benton County Code. And Rebecca Taylor and Greg Barret are here with us to make this presentation and facilitate the discussion. Welcome.
I will let Rebecca Taylor take the lead on this. She's been coordinating this process. Well, it's been a team effort for sure, but with the Health Department folks as well. So I know we have talked informally with the Commissioners about the need to extend this sunset date as ordinance, but we're here before you semi-formally today to start that process. So Rebecca, would you please take it from there? Nope. I can't hear you.
I know why. All right, so you can hear me now. It's nice to be with you guys again on this topic, given that, you know, we were able to get this code put in place as an emergency during, you know, the pandemic when it seemed like an urgency for our community at that time. And we really had hoped to do much more of a robust outreach to our rural communities in the county. Obviously, you know, priorities at that time made it very difficult to, you know, allocate time for that with the staff that needed to do the outreach, especially most of the outreach would be conducted by the Health Department staff there. And so as a group, basically the sort of impromptu task force that's been working on this code section, we have met several times since the adoption of the emergency and then the interim and have discussed a need to extend it one more year so that we can get out into our rural communities and really do the outreach that's necessary to really make sure that this code fits the need of our community. And so that's why we're here today, is just to say that that's where the group is with this code and hoping to extend it for an additional year. So it would be extended to December 31, 2022. We've already been engaged on developing a process and a strategy to do that development. So upon, you know, an extension of the code, we're already set and ready to initiate the outreach that's necessary to adopt a permanent code. We're also discussing potentially modifications to the existing code language as far as part of that outreach process and making sure that we, you know, stay up to date to any updates that come from the state that might enable some additional modifications of that code. So yeah, I was just coming to you about that and giving you an update about that code, knowing that it's an interim and that we definitely want to make sure that we don't have a gap between what this code provides our community. So the extension will enable or prevent that gap. As far as just an update, we did recently receive our first application for this use. And so that was pretty exciting. And as far as community development, we've integrated it into our normal permit processing system. So it was sort of, you know, it was kind of the prototype that went through about a month or so ago, and it will be utilized moving forward. So we would like to make sure that there is no gap in that code provision in our community.
Has that permit now been approved? Is it active?
Yes, it's been approved, and I was able to coordinate with the sheriff's office and our dispatch to make sure that that information is available to first responders, was able to give notification to other departments that might be able to provide additional assistance and recommendations to the applicant. And it was sort of what we had contemplated nearly a year ago, not ever being able to test it out. It was nice to see it run very smoothly.
Very glad to hear that. So do you have recommendations for changes at this point in time, or is the preferred recommendation just a straight extension?
So our, and that was our recent discussion as a team, we were discussing if there was a need to modify the code, if there was some kind of obstacle that was currently in the code. We did not feel that based on the feedback that we got during this initial outreach that's been conducted, specifically Macalaspy has been out in our community really reaching out to see, you know, what the needs are. It didn't seem like that there was any urgency to change the language, but, so we felt just to make sure that we moved it forward and transparency to the public to make sure that we just, you know, our recommendation was to maintain the current code language moving forward and then conduct the outreach to see if there really is a need and respond to what the community says those modifications are instead of the assuming of those things.
Sounds good. Questions?
No questions. I can make a motion if we're ready. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for public hearing to extend the sunset date of Chapter 40.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Really appreciate this coming back to us full circle. I know that there's been quite a lot of interest among the service providers in having more opportunities to locate microshelters and RVs at religious institutions, and I'm glad we have our first permit. That's good news.
Just a question, do we need in the motion to have the specifics of the dates that we're extending?
Unless you want it to be different from what we have talked about, I think our understanding is for an additional year.
From December 31 of '21 till December 31, '22?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that date change will be formalized in the ordinance that comes forward.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for Rebecca or Greg?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Next item of business is Item 4.3, Discussing Special Use Permit for the Shrewsbury Renaissance Festival. And I believe it's Leanna that's going to be the primary presenter here. Lynn McKee is also on the agenda. I see you're together.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I am. I am going to pass this until Leanna puts capable hands because she's processing a special use permit, so she'll be able to answer all your questions, and I'm here if you need me, so I'll pass it on. Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning.
So our special use permit for the Shrewsbury Renaissance Fair, this is their 18th year, well, actually 17th because last year they canceled, but this will also be their third year applying for the five-year permit so that they don't have to keep going to a public hearing each year. And so far, we've gotten everything that we need. Their contractors still rolling in. Each year they meet the conditions of use that we set up for them. They're a great group of people to work with. We've never had any issues that I'm aware of as far as where they're at and the things that they do, and they're eager to apply for this year's permit.
I think that that noise is gone. We can proceed if you have more.
Do you have any particular questions? Do you want more information about where and when?
Do you have questions based on the material in the packet?
Nope.
I was impressed to see how well-thought-out and organized the paperwork was and the coordination with all of the first responders and the ham radio folks and everything else. So I think that I don't have any questions either at this time.
I guess my only question would be, and I live in the neighborhood, but just curious, it seemed like it was contentious 18 years ago, and that that's pretty well faded and there haven't been many complaints recently. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. We have two ladies that annually, every year, they ask us for copies of all the paperwork that they submitted to go through it, but we haven't had any complaints from them two for the last, I would say, four years as far as the event concerned, and they are neighbors of where the expenses come out of the Valley.
Thank you.
And I will jump in and just let you know that we are coordinating with Bill Imager. We've sent him the map just in case there's any additional, like hand wash stations or sanitation that they want to include this year coming off of COVID, so we are coordinating with them on that side. So, and I think everything else, we're, as you saw in the packet, we have some very strict conditions that they have to follow, but so far, they've been very good about following it, and so they've been very diligent, and we've been happy with that. They've been good partners so far on our package.
It's exciting to see outdoor events like this reemerging, and I'm glad that environmental health is actively engaged in overseeing sanitation and ensuring that things are done so that we minimize any disease spread. So with that, are there, do we have any other five-year permits out there, or is the Shrewsbury Fair the main, the only one?
Shrewsbury is the only one right now. We used to have the horse trials, the individual horse trials, but they, about five years ago, they just quit having it.
Thank you.
And I'll chime in on this one. The five-year permit was designed explicitly with Shrewsbury in mind. It was repeatedly coming back to the board, and it was the same issues over and over, so we opted to change our code to allow for the five-year permit, and it has served everyone very well.
I do have one question about the code.
You need to be more specific.
It's an advanced question. In 13.220 Clause E, it requires a $1 million dollar insurance policy, but that was put into place in 2003, and most events that I'm aware of now require $2 million. $1 million is pretty darn low. We might want to consider changing that at some point in the future.
We can change that. We can also require, as a condition of approval, an additional, more insurance. I will say that we do have certain insurance requirements for contractors that drop down to $1 million, which is still above the tort claim limit in the state, but your point is well taken. 18 years in the code, perhaps it might be better to change the code to just simply reflect the current coverage requirements. That would be like to keep going back and amend that number.
That was my only concern when I looked at the package, was the insurance requirements.
And then in two weeks, we'll return with the public hearing. So the notice is going out to the Gazette Times that Leanna has sent the letters to impacted departments and neighbors, so we will then be bringing any comments back to you for the public hearing in two weeks.
Okay, further questions?
No.
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move that the five-year social gathering permit, Application Number 21-001, be moved forward to a public hearing on August 3, 2021.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leanna and Lynn.
Hang on a sec.
Okay, onward to Item 4.4, Continued Discussion on the Justice System Improvement Program with Nick Kirth. Welcome, Nick.
Yeah, my, thank you, thank you. I'm trying to get ahold of DA Geraldson, who is part of this discussion, and I was just going to, I sent him an email, I was just sending him a text to let him know that we're running early. So if you can let me complete that, hopefully we can get him here. It's an important discussion.
We are going to take a very quick bio break then while we make that communication, and hope to have DA Haraldson join us.
Morning.
Let me know when you're ready, Commissioners.
We are ready.
Okay. Thank you for having me this morning as well. I've invited Lynn McKee and John to share with Erica Cedar. I'm turning my volume down a little bit there to join us. So the historic Benton County Courthouse and its repurposing is fundamental fairly to the broader question of, you know, what's baked into the bond, which is also for discussion this morning, but I want to lead off with the courthouse discussion. And I've invited Lynn and Erica and John to share their perspectives based on, differing perspectives based on conversations that have occurred over the past year with the TAC and CAC as well as more recently with Preservation Works. I did want to, I did want to share a slide leading into this discussion just for you to keep in mind, because to me it's very important relative to the historic courthouse discussion. This is our, this is our opening slide for our public engagement presentation. It says, Building a Justice System for the Future. That's really what JACIP is all about at the end of the day, so I would ask that you keep that in mind for perspective. I also want to share, before I turn it over, that I think we'll lead off with Lynn and then go to John. I want to share an email that I got. Excuse me here. Meant to have this queued up, and I had it queued up, but then I had to rush over to, I had to rush over to something else. Hang on a second here. Pardon me while I find. There it is. So we're having, we're taking up the same bullet point of discussion today in, at our CAC meeting, and Alana Meyer has been participating from the beginning, and I just wanted to share what she wrote on the bullet point regarding the historic courthouse, because I think it really does capture some of the sentiments that I have heard anyway and have been expressed by the CAC. And she says, Regarding the fourth bullet in our discussion regarding where the house DA, would it not several advantages to relocating them to the new courthouse, question mark, or is the $15 million mentioned for keeping them in the historic setting sufficient for an active quit situation for the DA's work? The answer to that is no. If it's avoidable, it may prefer not to offer options that do not work well. So I just, I just want to share that perspective. And with that, I will stop screen sharing if I can get there. Close that. Stop sharing, and then open this up for Lynn and Erica to share a little bit about their recent experience with Preservation Works. And Lynn and Erica were there to discuss the feasibility study that we're conducting for the repurposing of the courthouse, but of course, that dovetails into what we're proposing for JACIP as well. So Lynn, take it away.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, I've been stepping in and trying to give, provide Nick a little extra bandwidth by supporting the historic courthouse feasibility study. So Erica and I have been working on trying to get all the stakeholder interviews going. I actually got to sit in on one of Preservation Works. It's a local nonprofit educational group, if everyone's familiar with Preservation Works locally. So we had, they wanted to have a group meeting last week, so Erica and I joined them, and it sounds like, because I've not been involved in the other interviews that the DLR group has done, it sounds like this interview kind of went a different direction. So actually, I'm gonna think, I'm gonna let Erica share her thoughts on how it kind of deviated from the normal interview process that they have.
So I think that, you know, the best way to talk about this is just in context of feasibility, stakeholder engagement, and kind of how that's going so far. I will say in general, I first want to share that we have gotten overwhelmingly positive feedback from the community. A lot of the people that we've reached out to have just been extremely grateful to be included in the process. So we've gotten a lot of very positive feedback from people who are just completely thrilled that we asked the question, that they sort of feel like as a, as a community that they're being engaged and asked for their input. So I wanted to share that with the Commissioners because I think that piece of it is something that the community has shown just great appreciation for feeling involved and feeling consulted. I think in general, we're getting a lot of feedback where groups and people have expressed excitement about the possibility of the historic courthouse being used for, you know, different purposes. There's a lot of support within the community to provide. We're hearing a lot of themes of making the space more welcoming and more accessible to all members of the community, maybe some sort of use that, you know, supports community gathering and meetings. And, you know, within like arts and cultural uses, there are definitely needs that have been identified for performance spaces as well as exhibition spaces, with a lot of themes coming up about space that is affordable, especially for people functioning in the nonprofit, and also spaces that are inclusive and, you know, really feels welcoming to all members of the community regardless of economic status, language barrier, you know, location, people outside of Corvallis as well as, you know, people within the city. So those are just kind of some general themes that have started to emerge from our outreach, which I think brings us to the meeting that Lynn and I had with the Preservation Works people. Their group had very strong opinions that the courthouse really needs to stay. For, I guess, first preference would be as a court facility. They felt very strongly that that was the most appropriate use for the building and that it, it was a key aspect, I guess, to the historic significance of the building. If a court's use was deemed, you know, not feasible as part of, you know, the justice system work, they felt that it was very important that the county maintained some sort of government function or presence in that building. I will say that, you know, again, to go back to our general feedback, you know, that's not something that was expressed, you know, very strongly by many other groups. But I think the Preservation Works people did bring up some points in terms of, I guess, how they perceive that the county moving out of downtown, that that is, you know, setting a, setting a bad precedent in terms of supporting downtown Corvallis. They brought up issues of access to services if the courts move out, transportation barriers to getting out to the research way facility. Lynn, you can chime in if I'm missing anything, but I feel like those were some of their main concerns. But in general, when we were talking about moving the courthouse out of, you know, potential county use or moving it into something more arts and cultural, I think their biggest concern was that whatever was proposed, they weren't convinced that it would be economically viable enough to ensure that the courthouse would be well taken care of in the future. So I think their, their biggest objection was they felt that changing the use would essentially put the building in danger because if the, you know, economic case were not there, then, you know, it increases the risk that the building would be less vacant for some reason. So if I, if I had to boil down, I think what the majority of their objections come down to, I think it's just that uncertainty of what will the future of the building be if, you know, the economics don't work out.
And I think one of the items they also pointed out was they, they are hearing in the community that the courthouse is not safe, and so they, they mentioned that multiple times, where you can't put anyone in there, it's not safe, it's not safe. And so, you know, I think the, talking about the, you know, the work that does need to be done, I think has implied somehow that, you know, that it's not a safe building to be in, and, you know, so I think that that was something else, that there's a perception there in the community that you can't put anything in there because until you spend all these millions of dollars to, to do all the seismic upgrades and such like that, and nobody else can be there until then. So that, that perception's out there.
Thank you. Erica and Lynn, Erica, did you have more to add?
No, just to build off what Lynn was saying, you know, this is a group of people that's very, you know, well-versed in, you know, historic preservation techniques. So I think being very clear and factual about what the shortcomings of the building are, the building is, is important because yes, it needs seismic improvement, but this is a group of people that's well aware that seismic improvement can be done, but it's done all the time and done successfully. So, you know, making sure that the messaging on that is accurate and factual, I think, is important.
I think that, sure, Erica, go ahead.
Quick question. When you spoke to Preservation Works, how many members of their group were actually part of the conversation?
I believe we have six people present.
Okay. Thank you.
I was gonna comment that the perception of the courthouse being unsafe, of course, is one that we, or you as a board, you know, discussed last fall, and then we reached the same conclusion then. We weren't as far along in knowing what direction we were gonna head with the courthouse, but we did conclude that if the county continued to use it, we were gonna make seismic upgrades, so that perception seems consistent with previous discussions that we've had with the Board here. All right. So I'd like to give John a chance to talk about the DA's attorney's offices remaining in the courthouse, because that really is the only viable option that we've identified relative to JACIP. Now, of course, the feasibility study, the whole purpose of it is to identify other options, other business models, but the question that we are currently proposing to ask, ask the community through public outreach, is whether they would support maintaining the district attorney in the courthouse for an additional $15 million. And I think we probably need to align on whether there are any other questions to ask as well, whether there's a broader question of spending. ask as well, whether there's a broader question of spending money just to do the seismic upgrades, although I don't know how that would exactly relate to JCP. But, John, please.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if I could be converted to a host. I've got a very brief PowerPoint presentation.
Should we set just a moment there?
I think you're set.
Okay. There we go. Okay. All right. So, you know, I think we can see that when we get into discussions about the different configurations, that there is a continuum of issues that have come up, and I'm gonna touch on these very quickly. I think that most of you know that this is an issue that I've been on top of for some time, and certainly compiled a lot of information about the various studies that have gone on with respect to the courthouse and tried to monitor the, you know, risk that we face working in the courthouse and for probably about 100,000 people that come to the courthouse each year, what responsibility we have with regards to monitoring the situation, providing a safe place for people to work. So that does definitely impact our discussion with regards to where our priorities would be. Now, my second slide here is going to illustrate a point that is not meant to be trite, but if you think about it, the criminal justice system is really initiated by whatever actions the district attorney takes. In other words, we are the heart of that system, whatever we're charging, whatever we're doing in that part of the process. In that sense, it is such an integral part of the justice system. The idea of having it off-site presents some real inherent challenges. And I think that this is an important thing to keep sight of because, you know, oftentimes if we have, you know, if stakeholders, for instance, really aren't, you know, working in the justice system every day, it might become easier to, you know, think that maybe it would be okay just to have the DA's office over here, have the DA's office over there without taking into account really what a core aspect, what a nucleus it is for the criminal justice system. So with this in mind, I wanted to identify the overlapping challenges that we face. And we've heard these referenced today with regards to what the costs are, both in terms of immediate costs to buy and costs that might come about if there's some retrofit coupled with an earthquake, now you can't use the building anymore, then nostalgia. And that nostalgia that accompanies the building, I would caution should not be underestimated. I believe, at least based upon my own experiences, that the nostalgic value and the emotions tied to that that exists in our community is pretty darn compelling. And that can be an issue that could make or break the success of a bond effort depending on how people may react to that. So I think that's something that we really have to pay close attention to. The third issue is public safety. And public safety is what we can talk about in terms of general concepts, or we can talk about it in terms of very specific information, okay? And so when we talk about this with regards to public safety, you know, we've already heard, for instance, the phrase that there's a perception that the courthouse is a dangerous place to be. And I would take issue with that statement. I would say it's not a perception, it's a reality, it's a fact. The courthouse is not a safe place for us to be in. Now, in terms of what we know up to this point, we know that since 1985, there have been 11 assessments done of the courthouse around the issue of its stability and its safety. And if you go down to number five, you know, in what, 36 years, there really hasn't been any action to reinforce the courthouse, despite the fact that, you know, in 2016, then Chief Operating Officer Dennis Malloy, you know, said in a statement to the paper, I don't think we can continue to wait. Going back to 1997, Pete Sandrock was asked by the county commissioners to identify, each department back then was asked to identify what they see as the biggest issues in the next five years, and Pete Sandrock's number one was the courthouse in 1997. And there's a lot of detail so that I can share with you with regards to the reality of what we knew in 2000. And it was of such concern that, you know, our Public Works Department was expressing concerns, but well, what if the public finds out about this? You know, this is, you know, back then, we knew that the walls were not attached to the floor, that the walls were not attached to the roof. We knew that the first and second floors, 50% of those, were up to 400%, above design capacity for stress load, and that on our floor, we were up to 400% above design capacity for stress load. And that we still know that nobody's really watching the weight up here and in those 36 years that have passed. Now, what I also observed is that there has been, unfortunately, I would say, and prior to any of our current commissioners being in office, it's softening of the interpretation of some of these findings in the reports, including statements to the effect that, you know, the building's in good shape without saying, well, the building is in good shape for buildings that were built in 1888. But if you talk to seismic engineers, one of the terms I've heard is they refer to buildings like this unreinforced masonry building as a death building, okay? So the reason that I bring up all of these points, and certainly I've got a lot more data behind it, is that I can't help but believe, I do believe firmly, that whether it's the folks from Preservation Works or our community, nobody wants blood on their hands. And so I wonder sometimes when we're feeling that sense of nostalgia, if we are perhaps, you know, allowing ourselves to be drawn by that nostalgia and not see what the danger is. Of course, part of the problem with not being able to see what the danger is, that the public really hasn't been adequately informed, I believe, as to what the, what the condition of the courthouse truly is. And that's something that I could spend a lot more time with, with regards to ongoing concerns and ongoing signs of movement with courthouse. So those are, those are things that I would, that actually tie into something which is gonna be way outside the box, okay? I want to show to you a courthouse that is in Tarrant, Texas. And this courthouse, if you look at the centerpiece of it, that was the historic courthouse. And the, the side components were added later, and they were architecturally consistent with the design. And so that gave an opportunity to be able to really expand, to grow, while preserving the sort of regal aspect of this courthouse, which might be something that we, we may want to consider. Now, when I was in eighth grade, I took woodshop, and I did a little bit of drafting in woodshop. And so I thought that I would map out what I think our courthouse could look like. So bear with me, I didn't do this with a computer, I did it all by hand. There's the footprint of our courthouse in yellow. And then you can see where I have added an expansion. And, you know, one of the concepts that I've talked to some of you about is just preserving, you see where the stairs are, just the top of the eye and everything else behind it to be, to build a very large courthouse that could meet our needs and that would also satisfy really that, that sense of nostalgia, that centerpiece for, for, for our community that I think people can be really responsive to. The challenge to this sort of idea is that if we assume that the courthouse is pretty much in decent shape and it's a historical building, then it's gonna be pretty challenging to take on this sort of, you know, basically demolishing the back two-thirds of it and keeping it facade. On the other hand, if the building is as close as to condemnation as I believe it is, that may be a whole different discussion, and it may open up a whole different series of options with regards to what we might be able to do with that particular facility and how it could serve our community. Again, that's really outside of the box, but I wanted to underscore that because I think that sometimes when we think about the easiest options, we stop looking at perhaps what might be some of the, you know, a, a, perhaps a, a better option, just because there's challenges. The challenges doesn't mean it can't be done. All of that to say, priorities for location, no secret to everyone, I believe we're the heart of the justice system and we need to be in the courthouse. If we were not in the courthouse, we would need to be connected to the courthouse. And I want to imagine, you to imagine, for instance, if there was a tunnel that connected us to the courthouse so that we could go back and forth, and that our systems would be integrated so we weren't losing connectivity as we're going from one place to another. And then third, to think about what it means for the safety of criminal prosecutors. If every court appearance they have to go to, they're going outside across the street to be able to get to where they need to be, that creates a real risk. It puts them in danger. At least we're in a courthouse where you have security, and once people are in, then there's some, some, you know, regulation of who's getting in there. At the end of the day, we're in an exciting position. You know, we have relatively new leadership with our county commissioners and a vast amount of information that we can consider in making a determination which direction we want to go. You know, I know we've made a sizable investment with regards to examining possible options that don't include the one that I just put before the Board of Commissioners. However, to the extent that the Board of Commissioners are considering keeping the DA's office in the courthouse in order to, you know, placate the Preservation Works interest, which I'm not critical of, I'm not critical of their interests, I just don't know that they are fully informed with regards to, with regards to what the condition of the courthouse is and the risks that we live with every day. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm going to stop my screen share here as soon as I can and get back to y'all here. While we're doing that, do you want to have any questions?
No, but I think...
No, but I think...
Sorry. Sorry. My, my bad. Reverting to old habits of turning on the mic. I think that Nick and Erica probably have comments, in particular on the fact that we did do some exploration of adding wings to the existing courthouse. So I'd love to have you address that.
Sure. Yeah, I actually wanted to weigh on all three of John's points, which were all good ones. First, as he mentioned the cost, I think it's important, and he was referring to the cost of seismic upgrades, I think it's important to keep in mind that the $15 million approximate for seismic upgrades does not guarantee, is not done at a level that guarantees the building will be re-encapable on a given size earthquake. So now, that may be true as well for any building, but it will certainly be true for the historic courthouse. So the point being that you could spend that money, the big one would hit, and people would get out alive, which is the design level, but the building would not be, be buildable. On the expansion of the existing courthouse, I, I love the concept, John. I will, I will add for the commissioners' benefit that DLR did take a very hard look at it. We discussed it with the Ops team, discussed it with TAC, and it was, it was simply ruled out as, as not viable. And I'm gonna ask, well, actually, let me finish up here, and I'm gonna ask Erica to weigh in on the viability aspect of the, of a winged expansion of the courthouse. Third point is, is John was requesting, or really articulating as a, as a design feature that if the DA were separated from the courthouse, that there would be some kind of physical connection by tunnel or breezeway or what have you. I'll say that none of our current designs offer that option. They are not, as well, are not viable. It would, if, if there was any possibility, it would necessitate putting a new courthouse on top of the VOC building, which we have defined a very good use for relative to the crisis center. Final point on that is even in keeping a courthouse in proximity to, to the historic courthouse where the DA to stay in the historic courthouse at this time, we do not have the Lumen parking lot, nor do I have, you know, any, any sense that we will necessarily have the Lumen parking lot to put a courthouse on. So it, it creates a situation that makes it more difficult to have proximity where the DA to stay in the historic courthouse. And then Erica, if you could just weigh in on the, the wing concept, because you probably have a couple of details that I've forgotten.
Yeah, well, if you, if you don't mind, I also, I want to start out just by saying that everyone acknowledges that this building is especially vulnerable in a seismic event. And to John's point, the, the building type that this is, which is unreinforced masonry, does have a, a poor track record in its unreinforced state in a seismic event. So I think that's an important indication to make, is just to understand that, you know, the seismic upgrade is intended to correct these deficiencies. In terms of the actual structure itself, I would have to say that my team has not seen any, of, any structural reports that have been done on the building that actually point to any risk of, you know, non-seismic-related imminent collapse. There are some cracks in the building that currently have crack monitors on them. I'm not actually aware of any undue movement that's been recorded by those monitors, and I would say that if there's additional information that we haven't seen, we would certainly love to see it.
I would like to just comment if I could quickly on that. We have one of the monitors that was stationed at the window, which is on the southeast corner of the courthouse facing the Benton County Plaza. The compression on that window is so great that the window no longer closes, and you can see that the framework around it is split so that the, it would be the western side of that same window is wider than the eastern side. There was, one of those measuring points was placed there, and it got pulled apart so far that the two pieces actually disconnected. And so, you know, that, you know, I, I would argue that if we're unaware that that type of movement is happening, I think it is a great statement about the challenges that we face where the building may be in far worse condition than anyone knows, and we're operating off with an assumption that it is in a better condition and therefore concluding that we don't have options. And so, you know, my, my point is this, is I think it's important because we're living in this, we see that every day, we see those mirrors. And, you know, and, and I've reported those, and it has not apparently reached you, Erica, even though we've pointed that out. And so, you know, that, that's, that's very concerning to me.
Okay. Well, I will definitely, and I'm sure Nick will too, will follow up with Paul Wallinger and ask him for any additional information he has on those. In terms of the viability of doing expansion, we did look at that as several of our, or in a few different iterations, as we were looking at potentials for the downtown site. You know, I, I think that there are variables in terms of, you know, how much impact that has on the historic structure. You know, one of the, one of the things that the team was evaluating was actually a historic approval risk as well. Because the building is listed on the National Register and it's under the jurisdiction of the City of Corvallis Landmarks Commission, one of the things... Commission, one of the things that we were looking at was the risk of getting that through the required approval process. So, you know, even not taking into account the, what I would call conservative preservation views that we heard from the Preservation Works group, there are just certain things that we know from experience would likely not be approvable. That would be any additions that, you know, are of a size or a scale that overwhelms the original building. You know, anything that kind of, you know, would destroy the significant spaces on the interior. And I think one of the big challenges with, you know, doing two wings on either side, like was shown, or even one, is there are a lot of operational issues that come from that in terms of trying to get people from one wing to the other through the existing historic courthouse structure, as well as just the size of what was, of what's needed for the course expansion. So I think those were some of the things that we identified. You know, there are certainly a lot of other limitations, but, yeah, to Nick's point, it was evaluated, and does not deem to be, I guess, the best solution.
John, one other quick point that I would make is this, is I think, you know, I think these are all valid points. Although, one of the things I wonder about, given the history of these courthouses, and I said these because originally there were four, two were demolished, and then the third one is in Polk. And Polk County had a building, you know, built next to it, so it's not freestanding anymore. And that combination is just, in my view, really ugly. And I wonder to what extent, when people think about expanding the courthouse, they're thinking about things like that. In other words, what would it look like if you, you know, built onto it, so to speak, you know, in that fashion? Again, I think there's a lot of options. I don't think this is the only one, but imagine this. Imagine if we had an artist's rendering of the design that I just described, and allow people to see what that looks like. Because frankly, it could be something incredibly beautiful, which really enhances what we already have. And further, I would say, to the extent that, you know, if, and I don't know the answers to these questions, but if you have a building that is close to being condemned, if you take a real strong look at it and see where does it, where is it today? And what does that mean with respect to your ability to take just the top of the eye and build behind that? So in essence, you have a facade. I'm just saying, if it can be done, why not at least examine that, you know, prior to, you know, just saying, okay, we're going to see how people feel about whatever notion they're thinking up in their head without having a rendering of what this could look like. You know, again, I get it, this is a little bit outside the box. Well, no, it's a lot outside the box, I get that. But I just, as you can tell, I mean, I think, I think that there's a potential here for something that's incredibly beautiful, something that could be very meaningful to our community, that could also offer the safety that we're looking for. I think that once we start splitting those issues off, that's where we run into trouble with regards to the safety issues.
So, as I understand it, oh, sorry, I did it again. As I understand it, the only way to get enough square footage, the programming space that Lori Copp and Rath worked on so hard, would be to essentially just to keep the facade. But at that point, you have lost the historic value of the courthouse that the Reservation Works and others in the community are looking for. And so, we did discuss these options, and leaving the integrity of the historic component of the courthouse, it was impossible to get adequate space for court facilities into two wings, and have any flow back and forth through the historic component to allow for functionality. So it was also a very, very expensive alternative to do that. And, you know, what you're proposing, John, to keep the top of the eye and build behind it, for many reasons. So we got to a point and decided to proceed no further. So I think what you're asking us is to reexamine that option, and to perhaps bring it back. And I think that that's a decision that, I don't know whether it's already water under the bridge at this point, but I'm not convinced that that's an option we should pursue.
Thank you, Nick and Erica and Zan, for explaining that, some of the background there. You know, back when I was running for Commissioner, or maybe before, I remember seeing that option come out, and then after taking office, I noticed that option was gone. So having the bridge there is helpful for me to know. And one request, if there, if you have any of that information, maybe written down, or in emails, or in a staff report or something, if you have some of that, that would be easy to share with me. I would love it if you could email that to me, and I could read it and just kind of catch myself up. And then, you know, speaking to the point about having it pass the historic review, that is a valid concern. I mean, I was the liaison to the Historic Resources Commission in Corvallis for two years, and they are very strict, you know, and they read Chapter 2.9 like a love letter. And, yeah, I think, John, you have a lot of great ideas, but I, you know, from my experience, like Erica said, I'm, you know, I just don't see them passing the HRC.
Yeah. Well, I remember this discussion from maybe a year and a half ago. I think I was in some meeting with John, and he shows me the picture of the Texas courthouse, and I like that concept, but it seemed like, as that was studied, that it wasn't practical. And I guess, like Nancy, I wouldn't mind having my memory refreshed on that darn reality. And because it seems like that had the potential to solve some of our problems. But what I remember from last year was, it was examined and just didn't, didn't seem like it had a good chance of being successful going forward. But I would say, and I, John, I appreciate the history, I knew, of evaluating the courthouse, and, oh, this is a real problem, and I'm, I guess, practical enough, and have dealt with equipment and buildings, that it's, it seems like we're going to keep the courthouse, and we need to step up and fix it to some level of safety so it can be used. And it's time for us to stop kicking the can down the road, and the building isn't getting any younger, and it, it's time. So I'm, it'd be easy to convince that we need to spend some money upgrading the facility so it's safe to use.
So two, yes, three questions here for the Commissioners. So the first question is the question that I posed at the beginning of the meeting, that's the question that I really need, you know, the DSO program needs guidance on. And it's the most fundamental, which is, you know, do we want to ask the public, or is keeping the district attorney in the historic courthouse an option that we favor or support asking the public for feedback on? And I ask a question in the context of what's baked into the bond, which is, which is a very complicated question. But I will say that based on, you know, my first public engagement meeting with DCSO, the most salient point I'm going to share with you is, this thing is still incredibly complicated and difficult to message, to the point of, you know, being unfeasible to message in the time that we have. So that's why, you know, the historic courthouse question is important. We are adding another facility, another value proposition, another question that we're asking the public to weigh in on. So that's the first question.
So do you want to take these one at a time?
I think we should take them one at a time, yes.
I think that, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to bake anything in at this point because of the fact that we are going out for public engagement, but I do think we need to simplify the options. I agree with you there. I know, but I don't like the baked-in language simply because of the fact that implies that we're not listening to the community as we go out for engagement. So that aside, the historic courthouse, I think, I feel comfortable saying it's not a piece of the solution at this point. That we've kicked it around, we've tried it on, we've addressed it lots of different ways, but it's not a part of the Justice Systems Improvement Program's solution. And so I would feel comfortable at this point, in our community engagement, discussing what the alternatives are and how we're exploring that, but not presenting a viable alternative of the district attorney's office remaining there.
Commissioner? Mr. White, please, for alone.
Go for it.
I guess, I would, my approach would be that we've been working on this project for, pick a number, but several years, yeah, thinking of Ari's effort, efforts several years ago. And I think if we know what we want, like a correctional facility, we ought to tell the public that, that this is priority number one, if that's out, if we agree to that, and come up with a list of things we, buildings that we think should be included, and prioritize the list. I absolutely agree with you. It's to our advantage to keep the ask as simple as we can. So I think we have some work to do as far as what we think the package is, but some of that work can include another round of community engagement. And I guess we don't have to call it to baked in, but we can say, these are our three priorities, and then, or two priorities, and start the public discussion with, this is what, after several years of studying, studying this, this is where we're, where we think we should be heading, and get the feedback from that to make sure that what we think, and what our community thinks are, has lined up as possible.
So, Commissioner, just if I can, want to be clear on what I, I think I heard you say, it sounds like you are favoring, similar to what Commissioner Rogers said, that we don't need to have a option of DA and historic courthouse. We do want to get feedback on the remaining priorities and message that we've studied the courthouse. I think I've also heard you say, and this is a, the other two remaining questions, but you know, we are very supportive of investing in the reuse of the courthouse and the preservation of the courthouse. And we ultimately know we need to take up that question and cause. Am I hearing you correctly?
That sounds correct, and just from our discussion today, well, I don't think it, it just reinforced what I already thought, is it's time to make the investment in the historic courthouse that needs to be made to keep it usable. And then the discussion is, well, is this part of next year's bond measure, or do we have that on a separate track? And I would be open to that discussion as far as where the, where the project fits the best.
So, I think that what I was saying is that it's definitely a separate track at this point, and that the historic courthouse, what we're really looking at is building the justice system for the future. And we place a great premium on the historic courthouse, but it's time to think about the justice system and the justice facilities that we need moving forward. So Nancy, with respect to the courthouse, and whether we should be asking the community about housing the DA in the courthouse, would you please weigh in?
Yes. Nick, could you restate your exact question for me?
The question is very simple, to whether we oppose to the public during public engagement, and whether we maintain as an option continuing to house the district attorney's office in the historic courthouse, at an additional cost of $15 million to the bond measure, or we house the DA in the new, the proposed new courthouse. So it's whether we have both of those options on the table for feedback, or whether we remove one and simplify what we're asking and what we're proposing.
Thank you. I will echo what has already been said about the language of baked in. I'd actually request that we not use that language anymore, because I think it just gives the wrong impression. You know, nothing really can be baked in if we don't have public process first. So having said that, that is a, that's a tough question. As an, if I'm thinking as an individual community member, my input would be, no, don't house the DA in there, don't spend the money. That's not a priority for me. But I'm more than just an individual in this community. I'm a Commissioner, and my job is to listen to the public, and I feel like I don't have a strong enough idea of what the general public wants. So this is tough. Zan makes some very convincing statements about simplification, and I appreciate that. You know, the other thing I'm thinking of is strategy, if including the courthouse and the DA has strategic benefits to getting the bond to pass. I would like to know that. But I feel like, how are we going to know that if we don't ask people? But I feel like, how are we going to know that if we don't ask people? Do we have time? Can I get just like a high-level overview of what the other options are for the courthouse? I know we briefly touched on some of them last week.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so as part of the feasibility study, we're looking at uses outside of, I guess, the county's purview. Other options that we've discussed in the past that are kind of not within the feasibility study that we're looking at now, but are still potential would be, you know, office-type sites used for county and/or city of corvalis functions. So I think there's, the uses being looked at as part of the feasibility study are largely revolving around community use or arts and cultural uses. And then, you know, separately, there is still potential to evaluate that for county, city government functions, just not justice system-related.
Okay. I guess my final answer would be I would like to hear from the public on their input. Which if that's, you know, if my two commissioners disagree with me, that's okay, they can outnumber me. But that's my two cents.
That's where I started. And I have to say that I have, given the complexity of what we're proposing with multiple sites and multiple facilities, and the historic courthouse not really being a viable part of a solution to our justice question, I have come to the point where I believe that we need to set it aside and say that we have embarked upon a search for alternatives, but it's not a part of the Justice Systems Improvement Program and building the justice system for the future.
Sure.
So that's kind of where I drew my boundary. Because otherwise, I completely concur, and I've, you know, been trying to do as much listening as I can to community voice about this matter.
Sure, and that makes complete sense. I tend to agree with you a lot. And you've done, you've been out in the community talking to people more than I have about this. I just don't want to get to a place where, you know, we have this section of the population who's saying, why didn't we even, why isn't that even an option? Why was that, why didn't we get, you know, weigh in on that? And, yeah.
I think we had tried to vet it. We've been trying to figure out a way to make it work for the last several months. And a part of what we've been trying to do through the process is to explore all of these alternatives and be able to say, this is what we explored. Here's what we learned, and here's why we made the decision. And I feel comfortable with the process and that we've gotten to a point now where we feel like we have to make a decision and engage in some of that simplification. So that's where I am and what gives me comfort at this point. Pat, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think we ought to have John with his presentation at our community engagement. The sense of urgency that you bring to this question, John, I think is, we need to bottle that and pass that around. I think to tell the community, oh, we'll deal with that later, is, to me, I don't think is an option. If the, if the answer is, we're going to keep the building, I think, and I can't imagine us not keeping the building, then we have to make the safety improvements and sooner the better.
So are you arguing that we include the seismic retrofit in the context of the bond?
I'm saying we ought, I thought we were doing community engagement this summer and to see what kind of response that we get. It's not the first priority on my list, but I can see it coming in at number three.
So.
But I would like more information and feedback.
So you, just trying to restate because it's, was not clear to me before. So your preference would be that we include a dialogue about the historic courthouse as we go out for community engagement, but it not include an option of the DA being in the historic courthouse necessarily, but we keep the door open to potentially including funding for seismic retrofit of the historic courthouse in the bond. And don't preclude that until we choose what's in the bond and what's finally baked in next fall, in October, November timeframe.
Right. And I think as part of that, having the DA occupy the retrofitted building has an option.
So you think we should include that option as we go out to the public? As, that's basically the way we've got it presented now, Nick, as, to continue with the current alternative as presented in order to test community interest in investing in the seismic retrofit of the historic courthouse.
Commissioners, Nick, I'd just like to interject. I think we're having difficulties getting to a common agreement amongst the commissioners. And my fear is we're over-complicating things right now. And because there's a couple of different things that I'm hearing, first of all, backing up, and Nick, you'll have to refresh my memory regarding the timing. The board, I thought, gave the direction that the county will do seismic upgrades to the courthouse. So I think that is a decision that the board gave, or at least they gave direction within the last few months that the county will complete seismic upgrades. The question there is, how is that paid for? So, you know, I think that's another discussion, which is, is it paid for out of the bond? Or is it paid for by other county and/or community resources? So I think, just restating that to the commissioners and making sure we're on the same page, do all three commissioners still concur that the county will invest in those seismic upgrades, no matter what the future use of the building looks like, whether or not that's for the DA or for community organizations or arts and culture? So I think, can we get grounded there first?
Yes.
That's my intention, although I certainly will seek every penny we can from outside of the county in order to do that.
Well, and I guess, yes, on the seismic upgrades and then the feedback that we get this summer, I think can guide us whether this is part of the law and ask next May or we do that as a separate project. If it helps, if it doesn't hurt, or actually, the indication is that it helps the bond, then have it in the bond.
So I think that, the other question, Nick, that you had is, you know, how do we simplify what we're presenting to the community? And because we still have a long list of facilities. And perhaps Commissioner Malone's on the right track with at least having some consensus as we go out for these presentations as to what the priority facilities are. But I'm not sure that we have time for that full discussion today, given that it's 11 o'clock and we've gone half an hour beyond our scheduled time. So I think that we need to pick up the conversation from there and figure out strategy. And I know we also did not get to a review of the strategy proposals that you had sent us yesterday. So we need to pick that up as well. I do want to point out that in the matrix that compares the two strategy proposals, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison because in the, in one of the proposals, the "we win" proposal, they refer to the fact that what they put forth is just phase one and that there would be a phase two to take us all the way to Election Day. So we need to take a look at that and find out what their phase two would be in order to really have a full comparison between the two. So with that, Nick, do you want to wrap us up and take, move us forward to the next discussion?
I will, I will wrap up and conclude here. I guess what I want to point out to everybody here is that we just had an hour talking about one element, one element of the Justice Program, maybe reached a conclusion with fairly well-informed people. And so this is, this is why I'm posing these questions. I don't disagree with any of their sentiments in wanting to gather public feedback, but I do feel our approach may not be aligning with reality. That's based on my experience meeting with DCSO last week. It's based on experience trying to find a presentation that meets our needs and has the right language and can be accomplished in 60 minutes. So I think the discussion I wanted to have back with our op team is, you know, is our approach aligning with the reality of public engagement? Do we need to be looking at, you know, a different approach? Again, I fully support asking the public, but maybe we need to be thinking about, you know, different stages and how we frame them, whether informational or, you know, posing questions, et cetera. So I'll take you to that. Now, questions, you have other business today we haven't gone to. Yeah, so I'm going to conclude here then, and we'll take some of the stuff in op teams today. Thank you. Thank you all for joining and appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, much appreciated. Okay. Thank you for joining us, DA Haroldson. Let's move on then. We have our business meeting next. Typically, we take a short break between the work session and the business meeting. Would you like a five-minute break? Okay, we'll be back at 11:05 with the consent calendar. We are live again. And we will begin our business meeting with the consent calendar, which contains meeting minutes from June 1st to June 15th and June 22nd of 2021.
I move to approve the consent calendar without the June, without the June 1st, 2021 meeting minutes.
June 22nd, you mean?
June 1st, 2021.
June 1st, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Yu.
And I was out to June 22nd.
Why don't we take them one at a time?
So the June 1st minutes, if I can just jump right in there, on page 15 out of the electronic packet, which is also page four of six of the minutes, there's just one word that needs to be changed. It's under 4.3, discuss initiating the process to amend the Development Code regarding flood plain regulations. Second paragraph down, the wise noted that some amendments might affect the national features overlay. It should actually say "natural" features overlay. So I move to change "national" to "natural".
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an "aye".
Aye.
Aye.
And then move to approve those minutes?
So we just approved the June 1st minutes?
With the changes.
Oh, so, okay. I move to change the word, if that approves it.
I thought you were moving to approve the minutes with "as amended"?
Sure, that's what I did.
Okay.
That's what I took it as.
That's right. Sorry, Erica, did you get that?
And the next set of minutes is June 15th?
Move to approve the June 15th minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an "aye".
Aye.
Aye. June 22nd minutes?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye".
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are finished with our minutes approval. Moving on to proclamations. And I know that Johan had joined us a while back. Are you with us? Are you with us? Welcome. We are ready for our proclamation of Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioners, for having me here. I'm very excited to be reading this proclamation to you all. All right, whereas 30 years ago, on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signs the law, Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, affirming our nation's commitment to eliminating discrimination against people with disabilities and stating, let the shameful walls of exclusion finally come tumbling down. And whereas the ADA was the world's first comprehensive declaration of equality for persons with disabilities and covers approximately 1 in 5 Americans, most people will experience disability at some point in their lives. Disability also impacts all intersectional identities. Ableism and stigma further harms marginalized and historically excluded communities, including people of color, LGBTQ+ people, veterans, immigrants, people in recovery, and houseless individuals. Our work for access and inclusion must include all community members of disabilities. And whereas disabled people and their families and loved ones that have been their advocates for equality have contributed significantly to our nation's advancement progression. Some leaders include Temple Grandin, now DeMarco, Judith Hume, Helen Keller, and Leroy F. Moore, Jr. We cannot forget that our local leaders and advocates for disability rights help and share our community improved services and access for all. And whereas among other organizations in Benton County, the Benton County Special Transportation Program, due to its contractor, Daryl Lussing, and the Benton County Developmental Diversity Program, along with their advisory committees, together serve well over 1,000 Benton County residents with visual, auditory, physical, mental, emotional, cognitive, and developmental disabilities, assisting them with residence, work, school, medical treatment, therapy, shopping, and social activities. And whereas while we celebrate the 31st anniversary of the ADA, and achievements of which have been accomplished, we also recognize the full promise of the American Disabilities Act can only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to achieve full accomplishment, implementation of the goals of the ADA. We commit to increased community collaboration, seek feedback, train staff, implement procedures and practices that meet and exceed ADA, ADA expectations, and ensure everyone with disabilities in Benton County can live, work, learn, and thrive. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims July 26, 2021, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Benton County, celebrating 31st anniversary of the ADA, reaffirming Benton County's commitment to continue to bring forth the positive equity envisioned by the ADA.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Well, I'll move.
I'll still have to say that. I'll say after, after you do the motion.
Okay.
I'll move to, for Benton County to proclaim the Americans for Disability Act proclamation number 2021, case 015.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Johan, you, I think you had something else to add.
Yes, so for internally, we will have a diversity dialogue for Benton County staff around the 31st anniversary of the ADA on the anniversary, so next Monday at 3:00 p.m. I sent an email about that, and then we will also be working with, to get some more, more future proclamations, to get those published out to the community and to get some more community involvement now that we're able to do some different things with COVID adjustments and everything, and still giving virtual opportunities to allow it to be more accessible for everyone.
Thank you, that's greatly appreciated. Okay, we are going to move on to new business and try and get ourselves out the door by noon. Item 7.1 is discussion and consideration of approving the FY 2125 Oregon Nurses Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, and Tracy Martineau is here with us to present that.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I am happy to present the final tentative agreement with the Writers' Association in consideration for your approval. I'm, the bargaining team consisted of myself, Carla Jones, who is the interim Health Center Director, Suzanne Hoffman, Eric Wilkie, my assistant director, served as my alternate, and I would just like to recognize and acknowledge that team, it was a fantastic team for bargaining, one of the best that I've ever worked with, and so kudos to our team. If you will make me presenter, I'll just quickly go over the summary of changes in the contract.
Sure, just one moment.
All right, you've probably already had a chance to take a look at this, but I will just go over this briefly, and please stop me or interrupt me if you have any specific questions on an item. I am really just going to spend time on some of the more significant changes. One of the changes was this Article 5 Association Activity. As you recall, a couple of years ago, there was legislation here in Oregon that passed that provided the unions with more rights for our public sector organizations, and the contract was revised to reflect those additional rights. I'm going to skip on to Article 10. Nurses are on PTO, or paid time leave. PTO is a combination of both sick and vacation leave. It's kind of a no fall sleep that is a combination of the two, which means they don't, nurses don't really have to have a reason for using PTO, they can use it for any purpose, whether that's for sick leave, or any type of personal time, or recreational time off. The majority of nurses are FLSA exempt, which means that they are not eligible for overtime, and in recognition, especially in this last year and a half, 18 months that we've been going through the COVID crisis, nurses have been putting in many hours above traditional work weeks. And so one of the changes here was to add 64 hours of personal leave for exempt nurses in lieu of that overtime eligibility. This is also equitable with non-represented employees who also receive 64 hours of personal leave. I'm going to skip on to Article 13, which is wages and salaries. And in this contract, we agreed with the nurses' request to remove themselves from the performance pay system and to go back to a more traditional public sector A system. So with this made, we revest the salary ranges to reflect well steps, and those will go into effect with your condition upon your approval, the contract retroactively to July 1 of this year. And we agreed that nurses would be placed on the step closest to, but not lower than their current salary rate. And then in subsequent years of the contract, we've been looking at a 2% adjustment in year two of the contract, which is July 1, 2022, a 3.5% adjustment in the third year, and a 3.5% adjustment in the fourth year. And happy to say that we got a four-year agreement on this, there was some concern about whether we would or wouldn't, and so that is, was part of our strategy in putting higher percentage increases on year three and four of the contract.
Commissioners also just indicating I was an advocate for a longer contract as opposed to the shorter contracts that were being proposed, so I'm satisfied for sure with the four years.
I would also just note that we were able to negotiate within our economic authority, so always happy when we are successful in accomplishing that goal. And then the only other item here that is significant is really that we agreed for the nurses to add one union representative to serve on the negotiations team, which means that they're in paid status, so that would be a total of three nurses in paid status for negotiation. I'd just point out that their current contract allowed for two nurses on paid time, but for the last several contracts, I think going back three or four contracts, the county agreed to allow that third nurse position to be included in paid time. The reason for that being that we have nurses scattered over three departments now, it's not just the single health department, and so the county agreed that representation from all of those departments was important. The only other thing that I would add is to this, which is not part of your approval process today, but we also agreed to a side letter with the nurses to establish their own labor management committee. Now, it would need with the management representatives from the three departments, the community health centers, the health departments, and sheriff's office, to meet in a problem-solving forum for any issues that might come up over the course of the contract. So with that, I'll just stop. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wanted to comment that although it's not in that summary sheet, I don't think, there was also a provision added for exceptional service and a bonus in the event of such exceptional service, and that was not in the contract before.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Otero, that was a big oversight on my part, and actually very happy about that. So the strategy behind adding that exceptional performance increase was also, I know that there's been discussion about the possibility of some, of the use of our funds for some other funding mechanisms in the future that would acknowledge superior performance. And so to create flexibility for both the county and for the nurses, we were able to negotiate that provision into the contract.
Thank you. Are there questions for Tracy? I think it's a very solid contract, and certainly I'm very glad to hear that it is within the scope of authority that we'd set aside in terms of budget, and a four-year contract is great. So I am, all I can say is congratulations to both parties.
Commissioners, Tracy and her bargaining team did an outstanding job here, and so I'm really proud of where we ended up. I would ask Tracy to kind of characterize how you view this proposed contract, Tracy, relative to the negotiated benefits and economic component. How would you characterize this contract? Would it be, I don't want to put words in your mouth, let me just stop there. If you can just kind of give the board where you are at with your bargaining experience and where we ended up, and, you know, how lucrative of a contract is this, for maybe, lack of a better term?
I think that the nurses absolutely benefited economically, but that is a fair contract, and it's an equitable contract, especially when you look at the countywide for non reps and taking out CMV DCSA into consideration. I think this helps, helps to actually equalize it more evenly than previous weeks.
It does also raise the question about the performance management system and the fate of that system moving forward, and I understand that we will be talking about that further as we move forward.
One other side note, you have included with your agenda checklist, the redline version of the contract. It's common for us to take a little bit of time. OMA is actually responsible for coordinating and printing that final version of the contract, and that requires signatures of the both the bargaining team and the Board of Commissioners Chair. OMA would like to gain those signatures through DocuSign. I have had discussions with Council Corney, and he reassures me that this is a common practice for the DOC, and it won't be unusual when you get an email asking you to follow the link and find the contract.
Yeah, the city of Corvallis uses it regularly, and I've been involved in a couple of recent documents signed that way, so yes. We're moving into the digital world, COVID nudged us even further. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll move to approve the 2021 to 2025 collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the Oregon Nurses Association and Benton County.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Tracy, and once again, congratulations to you and your team and to the nurses.
Great job, Tracy.
Okay, item 7.2, discussion and decision regarding initiation of annexation of Dumbeck Lane Water District into the North Albany County Service District. Vance and Gary.
Gary, you want me to take, take the lead on this one, or do you want to? Let me, I'll just start out, and you fill in all the technical blanks, so, and Joe may have some input on this too. This is the first step in the county's process of annexing Dumbeck Lane Water District into the North Albany Service District. They came to us many, many, many months ago requesting this, and also Albany, and it kind of all boiled over, I think, towards January of this year, maybe late last year, and between Joe and Vance especially, and then me, we've been able to kind of start moving it, and again, our partners at Albany have been wonderful as well, and, and I think we're there with regard to our process. So our process is to establish a public hearing and to review that, if that's what the board desires to do, and then go through a statutory regulated process to do the annexation parallel to that, of course, other rates, and now Albany wants to accept that and deal with that, and we'll have other modifications, we think, or possibly two agreements or ordinances to facilitate that between us and Albany. We are also working with Business Oregon to address the loan that's outstanding, and I think if anything's come out of this last little negotiation session with Albany and the Dumbeck folks, is that an idea was made to take the reserves that are left and pay off the loan upfront, which would be, that was the biggest concern for the county, was having to take that on. I mean, they had the funds to do so, so it made it a little easier, but it was still, we were taking on debt, and Albany, of course, cannot without a vote of the folks take on debt. So that's where we're at. We think we've got a good path forward here so far, and we've worked real hard with Dumbeck to get the resolution that you see today. They did that, I think a week ago Tuesday, and furnished that to us, and Vance prepared the order, and I think with that, I will step aside and let Vance or Joe chime in with anything that I missed, something I missed on.
So just, just a couple of comments on the process. As I explained to y'all a meeting or two ago, there are three different routes that a district or property owners can take to approach the Board of Commissioners about annexing into a county service district. In this case, it was the board of the Dumbeck Lane Domestic Water Service District that submitted its resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners initiate the formation process. That is, I think, interesting because it's the first time we've had that avenue come to, to you, but what is, I guess, a bit reassuring is that from this point forward, it is a very routine, albeit somewhat circuitous statutory route to annex the property, but we've done it numerous times, so there aren't any surprises. We have the timeline well established. Ultimately, if you decide to initiate the process and if it goes forward as we anticipate, we're looking at mid to late September when annexation should be completed. And Gary, I think, alluded to the, the loan idea, loan payment prior to annexation, which if this comes to pass... this comes to pass, will result in the annexed properties creating nothing more for Benton County than an expansion of the service district boundaries. We wouldn't be obligated to assume the loan and make payments that currently the special district is making, so we're really optimistic that the path forward is both familiar and will result in almost negligible impact to the organization as a result of the expanded boundaries. Did I capture your optimism, Gary?
That's great.
Actually, Commissioners, there has been a ton of work going on on this topic behind the scenes, and I have to thank my colleagues Vance and Gary, they've been instrumental, and Peter Trozen with the City of Albany, as well as Chris Bailey with the City of Albany. As Gary indicated, they have been great partners, so it doesn't mean that things have been smooth sailing, and I would anticipate that it will not be smooth sailing all the way to the end, there may be a couple of bumps along the road, as we've experienced, so just so you know there are still some things that have to be worked out. I'm optimistic, as I think Vance and Gary are in the middle, actually, so, but you may get a call or two along the way.
Okay.
And what precipitated this is the volunteer, or volunteers from the district got old or got tired, or just wanted somebody else to be in charge.
Couldn't recruit anyone else to be in charge?
Yes, and I'm going to throw up a cautionary red flag on this topic because there are many, many, many special districts around the, not just our county, but around the state that were formed 25, 35, 45 years ago, around a group of people who had the ambition and the drive to get something done to address some sort of infrastructure problem, that those folks are gone, and that infrastructure problem has been addressed. And so now the ability of those districts to remain viable is being called into question because nobody wants to run them. So I'm just warning you, this may not be the first time you get a special district that comes to you and asks to be annexed into a district.
I'm familiar with that process kind of regularly, I think, of the Kings Valley Cemetery, and sometimes there's people that have some enthusiasm, keep it going, and then it drifts. There's actually a state agency that helps small cemeteries, oh, okay, you haven't done your paperwork in the last 25 years now, here's what you have to do to get up to date, and so.
So does that special district help keep those small cemeteries alive?
I was going to say that people are dying to get there. Oh, man.
Out of order. Before I had the gavel. No, hit him.
Yeah, no. Yes, it is an issue, and I expect that we will see it again. And it's always caution, especially when we form really small districts without very many households, and there are not much turnover in residents over time.
Yeah, I think what's going to be a challenge is some of these districts that may not, may no longer be viable, we don't necessarily provide the kind of service, so there may not be a service district that could assume the group, so there may be different challenges down the road.
I would prefer to take this in two bites. I would like to accept the resolution from the Dumbec Lane Water District and then approve the order, setting the time and place for the process to continue with a public hearing. The resolution is on page 180 of the packet.
And the motions and what could be used as first motion is on page 168.
Depending on which one we want to take.
Does it matter which one comes first?
I think it probably would be to accept the resolution from Dumbec first, which really is your linchpin before the second motion.
Yep. So did you say I move to accept the resolution? Or is there a specific motion there?
I think you can do that.
Move to accept the resolution.
Oh, number 2201, is that the one?
I believe so. Thank you, sir.
All right, I will second that.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's not, no. It's, the numbering is 2201 in the Dumbec Lane District numbering system, not in the county numbering system, so.
Right, reject your friendly amendments.
Yes, so you'd be, so I guess the first motion would be to approve Dumbec Resolution Number 22-01, requesting Benton County initiate the annexation process.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Okay.
Now we can go back to page 168 for that motion, which was independent of what you
Okay, I'll move to approve the order setting the time and location of a public hearing on the matter of annexing property within the Dumbec Lane Domestic Water Supply Special District into the North Albany County Service District.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With that, thank you, and congratulations on that hard work, and we will look forward to the public hearing. And if there is no other business, we shall be adjourned.
The hammer, use the hammer.
Yep.